I'm giving the greylite. I'll immediately implement steps to staff up to 161.
We don't know how much we've spent on the transition to date.
Police changes. Surrey moves closer to keeping the RCMP, while Vancouver School trustees vote to bring back school liaison officers.
It's a bit of an affront when I'm just trying to keep myself out of hospital.
Pushed to the edge. ABC's healthcare crisis could be threatening a woman's life.
We would like to actually make them comfortable, and that's the whole point of giving them culturally specific food.
And we look at the changing needs of people who rely on BC Food Banks as more people feel the strain of rising prices. Good evening, I'm Dan Burrah. Thanks for joining us. Surrey City Council has voted to approve a framework for keeping the RCMP as that city's police force. The city's top Mountie made his case in front of a supportive public crowd earlier tonight.
Our commitment is to this city, and we are proud to serve the city of Surrey. We look forward to serving for some time to come. Thank you.
Afterward, a majority of council voted for the plan, a report that must go to BC Public Safety Minister Mike Farneworth will now be prepared for a final vote by council on December 12th. The vote comes after Mayor Brenda Locke campaigned to keep the Mounties and stop the transition to a city police force. Surrey's RCMP commander Brian Edwards also told council he was confident they will be able to hire 161 more Mounties and invited Surrey Police members to join them. The Surrey Police Union has said most of its members will not join the RCMP. To a different decision around police now, tonight the Vancouver School Board voted to bring back the school liaison officer program.
All those in favor of this motion? Trustees Zhang, trustee Chin, trustee Friedkot, trustee Richardson, trustee Yong. Those opposed? Trustee Ma, trustee Reddy, trustee Chan Pedley, trustee Fraser. The motion carries.
It asks for the reinstatement of the program in schools by next September. It was ended last year amid concerns about the impact that police presence in school would have on students' mental and physical well-being, especially students of color. The ABC Party ran on a platform to bring the officers back.
The Police Act governs all police in schools and elsewhere. It will invite people with guns into our schools, people over which the Vancouver School Board has no oversight.
It is this preventative proactive approach to crime prevention that become a primary deterrent in youth criminality.
I do think that we would benefit from further discussion with students across the district before the board formally votes on this motion because it is the students who will be affected, albeit the presence or absence of this program.
Earlier today, BC's Human Rights Commissioner called for school liaison officer programs to be phased out across the province. She says Indigenous, Black, and other marginalized students, as well as their parents, guardians, and communities, have raised serious concerns about the harm caused by having police in schools. Shortages and backlogs in BC's beleaguered healthcare system have left one Vancouver Island woman in a potentially life-threatening situation. Sandra McCulloch's treatment for diabetes requires a special authority designation given to certain drugs and devices that are not generally covered by the province. She recently tried to renew her designation, but as Belle Puri tells us, she hit a snag because she doesn't have a family doctor.
Let's go, come on.
Daily routines for Sandra McCulloch include keeping a very close eye on her health. Eighteen years ago, the former journalist was diagnosed with diabetes. In subsequent years, managing her condition has become easier.
It is life-changing.
Dexcom is a continuous glucose monitor that transmits data to smartphones.
There is a small fiber in the back that goes into the interstitial tissues, which is just under the fat layer. It reads your glucose every five minutes.
Initially, McCulloch used an inheritance to help pay for the $300 a month treatment. In retirement, covering the cost has become difficult. Last spring, McCulloch's family doctor got her special authority coverage with BC Pharmicare. She was shocked when she last went to the pharmacy for more sensors.
It was going to cost $300. And I said, how can that be? It's on prescription. They had to look on the computer, and they said, oh, the special authority has expired.
McCulloch's doctor has retired, so no one alerted her to the upcoming expiry date, not even BC Pharmicare.
It's a bit of an affront when I'm just trying to keep myself out of hospital.
And alive.
And alive.
Last Wednesday, McCulloch awoke to a life-threatening emergency. While sleeping, her glucose levels plunged to a dangerous low.
The Dexcom would have had a sensor go off at four that would have woken me up to go get some sugar in me, so I would have headed off the hypoglycemia. Low glucose can kill you pretty quickly.
Health officials say the province is working on a way to communicate directly with patients without doctors, as well as other steps.
Made significant changes around pharmacists, around the renewal of drugs, obviously urgent primary care centers, primary care networks, all the work that's being done, and our recent deal with doctors, all is designed to address that circumstance.
Health Minister Adrianne Dix has offered to look at McCulloch's case. She's not impressed.
There's a lot of people in my position. What's he going to do for everybody? How do you address this problem rather than putting out the one fire that's coming across your desk one day? That's what annoys me.
For now, McCulloch relies on a manual system, which has already failed her once, to monitor sugar levels. Approval of her new special authority, it's estimated, will take at least six weeks. Belle Puri, CBC News, Vancouver.
The BC government, meanwhile, is streamlining its process for bringing in more globally-trained doctors to try to address our shortages here. But as Michelle Gassup reports, there are concerns bureaucratic delays could slow down the process and come too late for some patients.
I decided that this is not the path I want to take. However, I would love to advocate.
Honya Bazagari was a practicing doctor in Iran until she moved to Vancouver seven years ago. The complexity of navigating BC's medical licensing system inspired a career change to the tech industry. One less doctor in a province where a million people don't have one.
I think when we talk about crisis, we need to take bold actions, yet they need to be practical.
Premier David Eby now promising it will soon be much easier for doctors trained abroad to work here in BC.
That's why we're taking action to get more internationally-trained doctors off the sidelines and into clinics where they're so desperately needed.
Over the next two years, the province will be tripling the number of seats in the Practice Ready Assessment Program. That's BC System that licenses doctors from abroad to work here. The number of spots will increase from 32 to 96. The program has only assessed an average of 26 people per year since it launched in 2015. Bazagari says she worries the current requirements will limit the pool of applicants to the program.
There is a regulation which says a physician should have past 24 months of internship or residency for family physician. However, it's not the case in Saskatchewan or Newfoundland. And by what we have in British Columbia, so many foreign-trained medical doctors, they do not sit in this category, which means that they do not have this criteria.
Among the other changes, international medical graduates will soon be able to work as associate physicians. They'll be licensed to care for patients under the supervision of an attending physician. Doctors trained in the U.S. for at least three years will also be able to work in community settings, including urgent care centers and family practices. All changes the province hopes will help the British Columbians currently going without a family doctor. Michelle Gassup, CBC News, Vancouver.
And more than two years after it was first announced, SFU's new medical school has more funding and a dean.
It's a very exciting time for SFU and for British Columbians, looking at their first new medical school, the first new medical school in Western Canada in 50 years.
Almost $5 million will be provided to cover accreditation, planning, engagement, and staffing. Dr. Roger Strasser, the former founding dean and CEO of the Northern Ontario School of Medicine, has been appointed interim dean. The province first pledged a medical school at SFU in 2020. The first class was expected to begin next year, but has now been pushed to 2026. The Vancouver Canucks have been hit with a human rights complaint. The team hired Rachel Dory as an analyst in January. Her complaint says she had PTSD linked to a heart condition and lived with depression, which she shared during the interview process. The complaint says Dory never got any complaints about her job performance and was later promoted. In September, Canucks coach Bruce Boudreau spoke highly of her at a charity event, and the province newspaper published a story about it. Dory reposted that on her Instagram account. The complaint claims Assistant General Manager Emily Castonge called Dory into her office the next day, concerned she'd spoken with the media. Dory said she told Castonge she only politely reacted after a reporter, a friend, texted her about Boudreau's comments. The complaint alleges Castonge responded by saying, quote, "You're not important enough to be cared about, and no one in the media is your friend, and I don't know if you have what it takes to do the job mentally." Dory's claim says she was fired days later. Her claim argues her sex and physical and mental disabilities did play a role in her firing, and says she expected Castonge would have been supportive of her as another woman who'd worked hard to break into a male-dominated industry like hockey.
There have been so many instances of poor hockey culture in the last couple of years that have come out, and to me, you can't move forward and create a better environment that's more welcoming to people who aren't white men if you don't have the courage to speak up and speak out against this kind of behavior.
In a statement, Castonge says Dory's allegations are untrue. Quote, "I take a lot of pride in my work with the Vancouver Canucks, being a good leader, a person of high moral character, and always respecting and putting my coworkers first. At no time was Ms. Dory treated differently due to gender, a mental disability, or a physical condition." The Canucks also deny the allegations. Food banks across the country are feeling the strain as prices soar and more people ask for help. The Surrey Food Bank is feeling that pinch in one place in particular, Halal Food Products. And as Peggy Lamb shows us, filling the pantries of its growing Muslim client base is getting harder and harder.
It's a hot item, one that the Surrey Food Bank is struggling to keep in stock, bags of halal beef. The organization says most of its clients are refugees who practice Islam, so this food moves fast.
We would like to give them the food that they want, rather than just taking what they don't want, you know? So we would like to actually make them comfortable, and that's the whole point of giving them culturally specific food.
Refugee Amir Abir Akar visits the food bank weekly, a trend that started two years ago after he arrived in Canada from Syria. We're not showing his face as he fears stigma as a food bank user.
We used to, about a year ago, used to come to the food bank, maybe half the food is not suitable for us. But right now, about 95% of the food is very good for us.
Since then, the Surrey Food Bank has upped its game, getting more and more halal food, but it's struggling to keep up with demand. It buys 3,000 units of blessed meat per month at full price, but says that's not enough for 10,000 Muslim families. On days when they run out, clients are referred to the Muslim Food Bank, their warehouse 10 kilometers away. Here, they only give out halal foods.
So we would have a can, and we would just make sure that it's all vegetarian, there's no pork in it, there's no ground beef.
CEO Azim Daya says the number of people they serve is growing. Since June of this year, they're seeing 1,000 more people come each month. Daya says they secure their halal foods, especially meat, through donations and discounts from big-box stores, something the Surrey Food Bank is trying to do, too.
Food usually allows people to build a good relationship. And once we build relationship, then we can help them in all these different aspects for them to progress towards self-reliance.
Aspects like employment and education, which he says can't happen until people are properly fed. Peggy Lamb, CBC News, Vancouver.
A man originally from Prince George was found dead in the cold of New Brunswick last week. Luke Landry was released from jail in Moncton just hours before with nowhere to sleep and no winter clothes. Frontline workers were unable to find him a shelter bed. His mother, who was from BC, says something must change.
Everything that he ever did wrong was related to drugs. My first information that came through the media was saying homeless man dead in front of a hall. And I'm going like, that's my baby, you know? And he wasn't always homeless. This was, like you say, he'd just get out of jail that day. He never even got his feet on the ground right. They gave him nothing, nothing. Something has to change, and has to change fast because we're going into winter. This is only going to get worse as the winter goes on.
Back in this province, with winter temperatures settling in across BC, the city of Vancouver is opening three warming centers starting tonight. As a lifesaving measure, they'll be open on any night when temperatures drop to minus five degrees Celsius or below. These are on top of temporary winter shelters, which will be open every night until March, and extreme weather response shelters, which open when the temperature feels like zero degrees Celsius or below. If you drive and are thinking about getting your vehicle winter-ready, better up to it. Crowds were out at a few tire centers today, with lineups wrapped around several Vancouver blocks. Some drivers reported waiting up to three hours for a tire change. Well, winter tires are not required here in the lower mainland. Anyone heading north to Whistler or over the mountain passes does need them.
Today's announcement will enable James Smith Cree Nation to develop and design the programs that best serve the needs of its members.
The Prime Minister announces new funding for a Saskatchewan First Nation months after a deadly attack. More details after this. And hello to everyone watching on our commercial-free live stream tonight. A New Brunswick mother is trying to spread awareness about autism through humor. Crystal Venator's seven-year-old son Stalin is non-verbal, so she started a blog to share the highs and lows of his diagnosis before discovering his love for telling jokes.
What do you call a bear with no teeth?
What?
A gummy bear.
Good job, buddy. Nice telling jokes.
Stalin received his official diagnosis when he was 21 months old, and he was diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder. Stalin still has a lot of the challenges. He's considered non-verbal or non-speaking, but he uses an iPad with special software to communicate, and he's becoming more proficient each day. He's in grade one, he loves school, loves people, and he loves to tell jokes. He's always been kind of a trickster. He would do things in his therapies, like if you had put out some colors and you said, what color is blue? And blue's his favorite color, so we knew he would knew that. But he would pick pink and laugh really hard. So when we got his device and we were looking at ways to incorporate it into our daily lifestyle, I thought, why not jokes or comedy? Because he is a trickster, and he would enjoy that. And so that's kind of become his Sunday thing, Stalin's Joke of the Week. And we have people from all over the world who tune in to see what he's going to tell. We decided that we would put out a joke book, a compilation of his favorite jokes. Jokes Are For Everyone is his book. I really did it as a project to empower him, so he was involved with every aspect of the book. All the jokes that are in here are jokes that he's told with his device. He picked the color blue because that's his favorite color. He picked this picture of him. He was the decision-maker and made all the important decisions. I did it so that he would know and other people would know that people who are autistic can do anything. Our goal is to educate people about autism and raise awareness about autism. My hope is that people will realize that a life lived differently is not a life less lived. And we have dreams and hopes for him, and he's just an amazing person, and I hope that other people who are going through the diagnosis realize that, you know, your child is the same person both before they were diagnosed as they were after. It is not a diagnosis to be feared, but a person to be accepted and loved.
Prime Minister Justin Trudeau paid a visit to James Smith Cree Nation today. He announced millions of dollars in new funding for the Saskatchewan community where that deadly stabbing rampage took place.
We'll invest $40 million over six years to build a new wellness center here in the community and to repurpose the existing Sakwatamo Lodge to address immediate needs. Today's announcement will enable James Smith Cree Nation to develop and design the programs that best serve the needs of its members.
The financial support is part of more than $62 million Ottawa will make available over those next six years. It will go toward programs that include increasing access to mental health, trauma, and substance use services. Since the deadly mass stabbings of September 4th, there have been calls for more Indigenous-led policing. That's something the federal government has promised it plans to work on. That's something the federal government has promised it plans to work on. An historic moment today for the Supreme Court of Canada. It welcomed its newest jurist, the first Indigenous justice to serve on Canada's highest bench. Olivia Stefanovic has more on the milestone appointment.
Since its inception, Canada's highest court has made landmark decisions about Indigenous rights, but never with an Indigenous perspective. Now that's changing, as Justice Michelle Obontsoin takes her seat on the top bench. Introducing herself in her Algonquin language, Abenaki, before reflecting on breaking the glass ceiling.
I hope that my journey to this court will inspire young women to pursue their dreams. I am a big believer that if you have a goal, work hard, and never give up, you can make things happen and achieve those dreams.
A proud member of Odenac First Nation in Quebec, Obontsoin is also a fluently bilingual Franco-Ontarian. She grew up on the outskirts of Sudbury, Ontario, where her dad worked for the mining giant formerly known as Inco.
I've always gone up and continued, at times with trepidation, but always moving forward.
Obontsoin began her legal career with the RCMP and taught Indigenous law at the University of Ottawa after collecting a wealth of academic achievements.
Michelle, you must be running out of degrees to take on.
The Chief Justice calls her appointment "an important step towards reconciliation."
I hope your story of persisting in the face of doubt will encourage students listening to today's ceremony to follow their dreams.
Before joining the Supreme Court, Obontsoin was the first Indigenous judge named to the Ontario Superior Court of Justice in Ottawa.
I look forward to seeing the diverse perspectives you encapsulate as you enrich the decision-making process as you take on this role.
Known for her expertise in mental health, labor, and Indigenous law, Obontsoin replaces retired Justice Michael Muldaver to play a key role in the top court's modernization. Olivia Stefanovic, CBC News, Ottawa.
There's a live shot of Camby Street and City Hall. It is cold out there, especially with the wind, and we are expecting snow on the South Coast this week. Amy Bell will tell us when and where and how much in your BC-wide forecast after this.
You can tell right away we've lost it. Not too many suntans in this crowd, and not too many smiles either. Everybody looks grim. This is only supposed to happen in places like Ottawa, Winnipeg, or Edmonton. You can tell by some of the get-ups that something has happened. The Eddie Fur League has gone into hiding, and anything goes. The Gucci-wearers and black patent crowds seem to have been replaced by the order of the mukluk and any other kind of footwear that might be warm, if not wonderful. For the first time in years, the guy who sells scarves, gloves, and earmuffs won't have to worry about bankruptcy. And there's another bright side to this little tome. Certain residents of Stanley Park think they've died and gone to heaven. The otters could hardly be restrained. That wonderful feeling of ice underfoot and frigid water below was just what the doctor ordered. No shrinking violets in this crowd, and the last one in is a rotten egg. Now, if you're a penguin, you never thought it would happen in this part of the country. Vancouver is the last place in the world a penguin wants to live, but this is delightful. For the occasion, the head penguin got all the other tuxedo wearers together for an impromptu water ballet. Move over, Borishnikov. The natives of the Kids Animal Zoo were less impressed. They said they liked it, but there seemed to be a lack of conviction. Only the turkey was excited, and you would be, too, if you escaped the American Thanksgiving. Maybe it just depends on your point of view.
Really? You've got to know how to cope with the cold. These people who walk around looking like they're freezing to death, not knowing what to wear, not knowing how to go about it, I don't have any sympathy for them. I mean, after all, when it gets this cold, you have to dress for it. After that, everything's okay.
How do we face these challenging times together?
Every year, we are inspired by the generosity of our listeners.
Tune into CBC on December 2nd for our annual Food Bank Day, a full day of special programming, giving, and community.
Lots going on this morning, lots of guests, great music, prizes to give away.
Visit cbc.ca/foodbankday for details on how you can participate. Let's come together and make the season kind.
The weather update is brought to you by Direct By Furnace, installing the most reliable heating and cooling brand. It's hard to stop a train.
Time for a BC-wide weather forecast with Amy Bell. It's coming, isn't it? Oh, Lord, okay.
It's that four-letter word.
It's, you know, and it looks great on the mountains. Maybe not on the streets.
Beautiful stuff. Love it in the mountains, not so much in my neighborhood.
Yeah, exactly.
We are bracing for quite a winter event heading our way. So not here yet, and will not be arriving in the overnight hours. Very early tomorrow morning, though, is when we're going to start to see the first signs of this snow system. So it's going to hit Vancouver Island first and then make its way over to the mainland. And we'll start to see it falling here around late afternoon. It'll really rev up, though, as we head into the evening. So we'll take a look. You can see it's just sort of sitting off here, and you can see that cooler air mass. So that's the blue and the pink. And then as it moves in, that's all the snow, so really intensifies as we head into tomorrow evening. I suspect the afternoon commute will be very dicey. So again, if you don't have to travel, if you can even work from home, you may want to plan on that. Not just Tuesday and tomorrow evening, but overnight, we're going to continue to see the snow, some areas getting anywhere from 10 to 20 centimeters. But Wednesday morning, that'll be another one that's a bit tricky. As we see the temperatures warming up, we'll head into rain, and in that transition lies the risk of freezing rain, especially in the Fraser Valley. So definitely could be in for some treacherous weather over the next couple of days. But yes, taking a look here, Tofino, actually, you'll start off with the showers, and then it will transition to snow. Eastern half of Vancouver Island already has winter snowfall warnings up. They will be especially hard hit by the snow. Whistler, of course, braces get plenty, which they love to get. And then out in the Fraser Valley, we'll start off with some sunshine, but then as we head into the day, that's when we start to see those flurries, and they'll really ramp up. A few flurries, but a mix of sun and flurries. In Dees Lake, Prince Rupert's staying nice and dry. Williams Lake, Prince George, Kelowna, you are all looking at a chance of flurries. Cranbrook, though, gorgeous day for you. Plenty of sunshine, at a high of minus 11, so it's definitely on the chillier side. But there we go, plenty of snow heading our way this week.
Yep.
Yep.
Still happens. And we all just wait for it.
Just be safe.
Okay, good advice. Thanks, Amy.
You're welcome.
That is your late news for Monday. Thank you for joining us tonight. For news anytime, check our website, cbc.ca/bc. Your next local news is on the Early Edition on CBC Radio 1. That starts tomorrow morning, possibly snowy at 5 o'clock.